Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call, see that all council members are present at this time. We'd like to thank those that are with us here tonight in person, as well as those who may be watching at home on City 56. We're grateful to have Troop 733 here visiting with us tonight, Boy Scout Troop, and we've asked them if they would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening following the invocation. So those who would like to join with us in prayer may do so at this time.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together to do the business of the city of Cholo. We're grateful for our citizens and for those who reside within our city boundaries, Father. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to have government that can do the best for the people. We're thankful for the moisture that we've been blessed with and for our public staff who have diligently cleared roads and worked and been able to keep people safe. We're grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy of citizens and living in this free country. We ask you to bless those who guide and direct our nation, that they'll have wisdom and understanding, and that we'll be able to unite and become closer as people. Now, help us this night as we deliberate the things of the city, that we might do so with Thy guidance and direction, and these things we give Thee thanks for, in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Troop 733. Appreciate that. Tonight, our first item is called to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city that's not on the agenda may do so at this time. Seeing that nobody moved, I'll close call to the public and come back to special events. This evening, we have a presentation regarding Northland Pioneer College background service offered in the future construction projects. Tonight, we have Mark Vest and Betty Wilson. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Betsy Ann Wilson. I'm the Executive Director of NPC Friends and Family. We're the college's nonprofit foundation, and our primary function is to raise need-based scholarships for the students of Northland Pioneer College. Probably a lot of you know that in the past, we've had a community outreach program through the college where we've invited different municipalities and public entities to come to the college and share with us concerns and learn about programs that the college offers and provide us with feedback. And we're trying something a little bit different now, where we're coming to you and talking about Northland Pioneer College. And we decided to kind of start at the beginning. A lot of you are already familiar with Northland Pioneer College, but many aren't. And so, we've begun by doing just a brief overview of Northland Pioneer College, the services it offers, and where we're kind of going. And I've brought tonight our new President, Mark Vest, to talk about a direction that the city of Cholo and the college are actually going to be taking in short order, and he'll be talking about that. So, just to give a brief introduction to Northland Pioneer College, I am... Is this going to show on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Can you all see it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, we're a regionally accredited, publicly-supported, comprehensive community college, and we serve all of Navajo and Apache counties. We serve Navajo County and the communities of Cholo, Snowflake, Holbrook, and Winslow with full campus locations. And then, we have center locations located in White River, Kienta, and Palaca on the Hopi Reservation, and we serve Apache County by intergovernmental agreement in the communities of St. John's and Springerville. We are excitedly preparing for our next accreditation. When we say that Northland Pioneer College is a fully accredited community college, we're accredited by the North Central Association of Colleges and Schools through the Higher Learning Commission. And this means that we work with all the other community colleges and state universities through a state articulation task force, and because we are accredited and they are accredited, all of our general education courses transfer seamlessly to those institutions. So, a student going to Northland Pioneer College can complete the first two years of a bachelor's degree and transfer seamlessly to a state university or to any one of the community colleges in the state as well. So accreditation means that we meet or exceed the standards that are required of a community college and ensures that we can transfer our courses to other community colleges and universities in our area. We've been accredited since 1979, and so, we're on a 10-year schedule for accreditation. And our next accreditation visit from the Higher Learning Commission will take place in November of this year. We've been preparing for this for about five years, and the entire college works together to do this. We have to address a series of cases that we have to prove to the Higher Learning Commission, pillars of excellence, if you will, and not only make a case for why we meet those criteria, but provide evidence to demonstrate. And then, they will come and visit us and review the college and visit our various locations, talk to the community. They could even talk to some of you about Northland Pioneer College and then decide if we get our next 10 years of accreditation, which we hope to. We are the second-largest community college district in service area in the United States, 21,000 square miles of service area. So, this is what we akin to approximately the size of the state of West Virginia. So, it's a remarkably huge area, and most of you are familiar with that, with a population density of about 10 people per square mile. We serve through the campuses and centers that were established in 1972 through a combination of onsite classes, which are taught face-to-face by instructors, and also through a very highly advanced distance learning system. And for those of you that haven't been to the college recently, I would encourage you to stop and visit us and see our distance learning classrooms, because they're really state-of-the-art. And just like what we're doing tonight, if you were having this instruction with one of our NPC instructors and you were in maybe Kiinta or Palaca or White River, and I was talking to you on that TV screen, it would just be like real instruction. It's really, really wonderful. Our White Mountain Campus in Cholo is the one that's probably nearest and dearest to you, and so, this is where we feature a number of full complement of general education classes for transfer to state universities. We have our visual arts program there that includes things like photography, drawing, ceramics, the visual arts, and these are often presented in our Talon Gallery, which is in the Aspen Center on our White Mountain Campus. We also have outside art shows in the Talon Gallery for the community to come and take part in. Coming up in the first week of March, we're going to have our annual juried high school arts exhibit that will be exhibited in the Talon Gallery, and these are students from around the NPC service area, the high schools that feed NPC, that come and allow their students to submit artwork and be judged and accepted to be juried into the exhibit. We also have our science and nursing programs housed there. We also have a nursing program housed at our Little Colorado Campus in Winslow. Cosmetology is located there. Metal arts welding and automotive technology take place off the Cholo campus currently. President Vest is going to be talking to you a little bit about a plan to bring them onto the campus, but currently, they're served... We provide those classes in off-campus locations in the Cholo area. We have a Small Business Development Center that helps to incubate small businesses through Director Tracy Manquuso, and this is also where our Vice President of Learning and Student Services Office is located, as well as the Office of the Chief Business Officer, Mataria Ellison. Our other NPC low campus locations are the Painted Desert Campus in Holbrook, the Little Colorado Campus in Winslow, Silver Creek Campus in Snowflake, and then Kiinta on the Navajo Nation, Palaca on the Hopi Reservation, and White River on the Fort Apache Reservation. And then, as I mentioned, Springerville and Ebro and Apache County are served by intergovernmental agreement. We currently serve over 7,000 students annually by an unduplicated head count. We have an open admissions policy, meaning you don't have to apply and be accepted. If you choose to take classes at Northland Pioneer College, you're accepted to take classes there. Our enrollment is measured by full-time student equivalence, and that's a term that we refer to as FTSE. And this is near and dear to our expenditure limitation, for example. Enrollment matters for how much we can spend in operational budget. 15 credits equals one FTSE. So, a student... So, 15 hour equivalents equals one full-time student equivalent. And then, our enrollment also dictates how we can operate in a number of federal grant projects, including our financial aid programs. Our fall FTSE was up about 2% over last year, which was good news, because usually in a burgeoning economy, community college enrollment is down a little bit, so we were optimistic about that, and our head count was about 3,100 unduplicated students. About a third of that is dual enrollment and NAVIT. So, what are dual enrollment and NAVIT? High school programs that allow students to take courses for both high school and college credit. So, NAVIT is our northeastern Arizona Vocational Institute of Technology. This used to be called the JTED or Joint Technical Educational District. It's now a Career and Technical Educational District. There are several of these throughout the state that allow high school students to take vocational and academic courses from the community college during the high school day and receive credit both towards high school graduation and towards a college degree. NAVIT programs include cosmetology, welding, automotive technology, and construction technology and things like that. Dual enrollment are classes that are taught by high school instructors in the high school setting, and they're also certified to teach for college credit. So, they're certified according to NPC's accreditation standards. To kind of confuse the issue a little bit, concurrent enrollment is very similar to that, but concurrent enrollment is where high school students come to the NPC campus to take courses from a college instructor, or the college is teaching in the high school setting with a college instructor. So, we have a program called Talon, which is Technology to Advance Learning Outcomes at Northland, that was funded by the Title III Program in the Federal Department of Education. That is located in 14 high schools across the NPC service area, and it enables our NPC instructors to teach from a central location and teach courses for concurrent enrollment credit to students at the distance locations. This is a really powerful program, because these students, especially those located in really remote high schools like Red Mesa and Shonto, would not have the opportunity, even in spite of the fact that they have the academic talent and the ability, would not have the opportunity to take courses for concurrent enrollment credit were it not for this program. And there's a really burgeoning body of evidence from now, a number of studies, that demonstrate that students that take as few as seven college credits while they're still in high school, and this would be like a biology class and an English class, are 50% more likely to complete a college degree, not to go on to college, but to complete a college degree. So, these are very important programs, and we're happy to be able to offer them. And I just told you that. So, what makes us a comprehensive community college? The idea behind the community college is that everybody should have access to higher education at affordable price and that the curriculum should be geared to the needs of everyone, whether you're taking a course for college transfer, or a course for college to career, or a course for interest, general interest. So, we do offer courses for university transfer. The Associate of Arts, Associate of Arts in Early Childhood, Associate of Arts in Elementary Education, Associate of Business and Associate of Science degrees meet all of the criteria for what's called the Arizona General Education or AJET curriculum. So, these are the courses, these are the programs that transfer to university. Then, we have direct-to-work programs. These are our Career and Technical Education programs like welding, automotive technology, construction, nursing, cosmetology. We have a GED program for people who come to college either because they need to earn the high school equivalency diploma or GED, or because they need to complete some college preparation classes in order to be ready to take college-level classes. Nationwide, about 50% of students have to take some sort of remedial coursework before they can take college English or math, for example. And so, our college career prep program provides that opportunity. And then, we have the college credits while still in high school, the dual concurrent Talon and NAVIT. We have corporate training, which offers customized training for employees, employers who want their employees trained in a certain area, and they want NPC to help out with that. In the summer, we offer a kids' college at all of our campuses and centers. We offer a kids' college at all of our campuses and centers. And this is an opportunity for people that are your age to come to a college campus and take fun classes like science, technology, engineering, art. You can build model rockets. You can learn how to build little engines. You can learn how to decorate cupcakes. You can learn art. There's a theater program. We have non-credit classes, which are just adventures for people who are interested in learning about the area or learning about some topic. And then, a lot of these classes are delivered online, so you can take them not only in distance learning formats or face-to-face as you and I are, but through the medium of the computer in your own home. And we have online classes for teacher certification. So, why are we a great choice? Well, I always get up on the soapbox and talk about my experience in the community college system. I'm actually a product of the University of Arizona, and when I went there, I went on a 4-H scholarship 500 years ago in Tucson. And the first chemistry class I had, my freshman chemistry class, had 500 students in it, and it was taught in a refurbished movie theater. So, we met three times a week with a professor, and we had a lecture, and we met once a week with a teaching assistant who was a graduate student. And so, you know that there was no opportunity for someone to raise their hand and say, "I didn't understand that. Would you go over that again?" Because there are 500 students in the class. So, it became very clear about a month into this class that I wasn't doing very well, and I was on a science track, so I had to know organic chemistry. I didn't just have to pass it, I had to understand it. So, I ended up dropping it, and I took it that summer at Pima Community College. It was taught by a full PhD. He used the same syllabus. He used the same textbook. There were 20 students in the class. I got an A, and when I finished it, I knew organic chemistry. So, my feeling about that became just a really resounding belief in community colleges. Community college instructors are really invested in their students. They're not just there to do research and publish, not that that's a bad thing, but they're there because they care about students. And because we are accredited by the Higher Learning Commission, the vast majority of our instructors, they have to hold a master's degree because of our HLC accreditation, but many of them hold the PhD. All of our classes are very small. The average instructor-to-student ratio is about 14 to 1. And I really can say, from personal knowledge of these instructors, they care about their students. So, it's not just a great value, because it's a huge savings. NPC has the lowest tuition of any community college in the state, and it's a fraction of university tuition, but you're getting a quality education at Northland Pioneer College, and it's right here in our hometowns. So, with that, I want to turn our program over. If I can answer any questions, I would be happy to, but I want to turn our program over while we have time to our President, Mark Vest, to talk about especially NPC in Cholo. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to... I know a few of you, Rennie and I have served on committees together for years, but I just wanted to introduce myself first briefly to all of you, and also to comment, I know you're not used to this. I know you're not used to the college coming to county council meetings and talking with you, but this is something that if you're willing to have us back, we'd like to do on a regular basis. I talked to Ed about this right after I started as president this summer. We'd like to come on a regular basis, maybe two to three times a year, and one of those would be more of a business meeting, where we could give you some data and information about how local tax dollars are being spent at this campus, how many students we have on this campus, more detail on kind of the quick overview that Betsy just gave you. But we'd like to do that for you on a regular basis, so you get a sense of the kind of business activity and economic development activity that is taking place through the college and the community. Specifically tonight, I just wanted to quickly introduce myself to you all and tell you a little bit about where I came from and why I applied for the presidency here last spring. And then, I want to talk to you just for a couple of minutes about the very early stages of a major construction project that's going to be going on at the campus here in Cholo over the next few years. So, just quickly about myself, my wife and I moved here in 2000 because she took a job with Indian Health Service. She's a dual board-certified physician in internal medicine and pediatrics. And probably like a lot of people in this area, she signed a two-year contract, and we thought, "Well, I'm not even sure if we could buy a house, because we're only going to be here for a couple of years, and then, we're going to go find a place where we want to settle." Well, that was nine two-year contracts ago for her, and we have two girls that are in the Blue Ridge School system now, and unless somebody kicks us out of the county, we're settled. We love it here, and it hit me as I was driving to work the other day that I've now lived in Navajo County longer than I've lived anywhere. That on the one hand means I'm old, on the other hand, it means I've kind of settled in, which is a good thing, because I grew up in a small town. I grew up in a town about the size of Pinetop. So, this doesn't feel weird to me at all. This feels like home. I started working at the college in 2001, really until this past summer. All of the jobs that I've had at the college were on this campus in Cholo, so I'm very familiar with it. I was the Vice President for Learning and Student Services for the last decade, basically. So, at that point, about 60% of the college's employees and budget reported through me to the President. And when Dr. Swarthow announced her retirement and said she would be leaving this summer, I had a long think about whether or not I really wanted to drive to Holbrook every day, because that's where the President's office is, and I live in Pinetop, but it's been worth it so far. So, let me talk to you a little bit about what is about to happen at the White Mountain Campus in Cholo and some quick history. The college has a master facility plan that it developed in the 1980s and then updated in the early 2000s. And then, after the economic crash, we updated that master facility plan again to reflect kind of the new reality that all public entities in the state were facing. We have a district governing board that in the early 2000s said, "We've done our last bond. We've done our last construction bond if we can help it. From this point forward, any construction or building that the college does, it's going to save money, and once it's saved enough money to do that building, it's going to build with cash, so that we don't have to run a secondary property tax, we don't have to pay, we don't have to do debt service or anything like that." And remember, we're a little bit different from K-12 districts in that we receive no capital funding from the state at all. Everything that we do in terms of capital, even if it's just equipment or maintenance, we have to move money annually out of our operational budget into a capital fund. So, for the last 15 years, we have slowly been accumulating a set aside pile of dollars to do various projects. A few years ago, we built a 27,000 state-of-the-art skill center, 27,000 square foot state-of-the-art skill center on our campus in Holbrook. What we have not done in the master facilities plan is the activities here in Cholo on the White Mountain Campus, and those were the last, because they were the most extensive. So, we've got a number of projects that we need to do, and I just want to make sure. You guys can see this overhead map, because it's not up on the screens here, but you all can see it, right? Okay. So, what you see...
Screen now.
Oh, there it is, on the screen. Great, thanks. So, what you see here is an overhead shot of the current campus and a sense of the square footage. And one of the things you'll notice, especially when you see things like tech lab here, cosmetology here, phlebotomy, EMT, is that, for example, our allied health and medical programs are kind of scattered in small buildings across the campus. Some of those buildings were set up as temporary buildings 40 years ago, and they were supposed to be there 10 years, and they're still there. So, it's been a long time, but again, we've been slowly accumulating the capital that we need to begin a major construction project. The other problem that has kind of developed over time is that as we have built out our workforce development programs here, and Betsy's already covered some of those, like welding and automotive, because we didn't have any space on this campus, we actually leased space in the industrial park and moved those facilities and moved those programs into those facilities. And while we're very thankful over the last few years that we've had that space and had that opportunity in the industrial park, it really creates some problems, both for us and for our students, that they are separated from all of our services, they're separated from the library, academic advisors, the front office, our financial aid services, all of those things. And we'd like to get those students out of the industrial park, onto campus, so they have the same access to college services and activities that our general education students have. And then, finally, we have a general education building that is about 20 years old now. That's the one labeled Learning Center on your map that is half on top of good soil and half on top of a clay bubble. Now, what happens when you have a building that's half on top of good soil and half on top of clay bubble?
It robs.
It moves. Yeah. So, we need to stabilize that building, and that means getting out of that building while they go in and do some heavy work on stabilizing that building. So, we'll probably have to gut that building all the way down to the stem walls and then rebuild it. So, if we're going to do that, we want to factor that into this construction project that we want to do on this campus. So, essentially, we have three things that kind of complement one another that we'd like to do over the next three to four years at the White Mountain Campus. We want to build a skill center that looks very similar to the one we have in Holbrook, somewhere between 25,000, 30,000 square feet, that would house our automotive program, that would really let us build out our welding shop. Right now, our welding shop in Cholo is about two-thirds the size in terms of student numbers than the one in Holbrook, and we have a waiting list of students to get in. We could easily accommodate about a third to a half more students than we currently have if we just had more welding booths, but we don't have space for more welding booths. And then, finally, we think there's an opportunity to bring some programs that we're currently running in other parts of the county here if we just had a metal concrete slab floor, metal building, big empty space to move those kinds of workforce programs into. So, we'd like to do that on campus. We'd also like to significantly expand our medical, nursing, and allied health programs. We currently have 30 students in our nursing program each year, and this campus, Summit Hospital, has told us they'd love to hire more local nurses, but we need to produce more local nurses for that to happen. Right now, we're space limited, among other things, on the number of nursing students that we can have. Our nursing program and our science program share a building. We'd like to move nursing and allied health into their own building, because we have new programs we'd like to bring online, like surgical technician and massage therapy. Right now, we have no space for those programs, but we know there's a demand. So, giving us space would actually be able to open up more services for people in the south end of the county. And then, finally, since we need to do significant work on our learning center, we'd really like to build a two-story, 20,000-square-foot new learning center that takes advantage of a lot of the advances in distance learning over the last few years. So, we do those three projects. Let me see if I can advance the slide here. So, those green areas that you see are the spaces we have to build in, and it's going to be a little hard for me to describe this just by showing it to you, but the wooded area on the right side of your screen, that's Whipple, that's the Whipple Eighth Corner. We'd like to build the skill center there. And obviously, we'll be sitting down and talking to the city, and we've had an initial conversation already, but we're in the very early stages of this. We'll be working with the city throughout this process to make sure that we meet all the needs of the city and the citizens of Cholo as we do this. That green space in the middle of campus, we'd like to build a 20,000-square-foot, two-story general education building there. And then, as we do that, that will let us refurbish the learning center and turn it into a nursing and allied health building. So, we hope at the end of this, what is likely to be a three- to four-year project, we will have a much larger student population that's actually present on this campus. It'll be a better concentration of students. It will give the students in the skill center an easier access to general education courses, which will help more of them finish their degrees. It will allow us to produce more students in critical fields like nursing and allied health that we know create, that we know there's a demand for in terms of jobs locally, and it will also allow us to expand programs that are already very successful, that we have, as I said, waiting list of students, especially in NAVIT, to get into, like automotive, automotive repair. We want to expand that to include diesel and welding as well. Okay? So, very early stage of this project. Our board has already approved the capital for the project. We will take it all out of our existing cash reserves. It won't cost the taxpayers of the county a penny of new tax dollars to do the work. On top of that, if you read the White Mountain Independent, which I'm sure you do, there's an ad in there right now for a construction manager. We would like to hire that person, have them be a college employee to oversee the entire project for the duration of the project, and tomorrow, we will be putting out a request for qualifications for an architecture firm to begin working with us on initial site design, and we'll involve the city at that point. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
We've taken up a lot of your time, so you may want to kick us out and move on.
No, we appreciate it. Thanks for your report.
Okay. Thank you.
And Betsy, I butchered your name, so thank you. Okay? All right.
Well, it was great to introduce myself to all of you all, and someone from the college, I'm not sure it'll be me every time, it may be Mataria Ellison, our Chief Business Officer, when we do kind of a business report for you. We'll be back as often as you'll let us, because we want to get to know you better.
That's good.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Next item we have is the consent calendar. Any discussion on any of the items that are on the consent calendar tonight?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Let me cover what those are first, Rennie. Okay. We have a consideration of a non-commercial ground lease with Brock and Sharon Arrows and the... in the minutes of the February 5th and the regular meeting and the February 5th study session. Pull up for motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is new business. We have a public hearing, ordinance number 2019-03, amending zoning conditions of ordinance number 2016-03 on AP number 21004031 through AP number 21004051. Mr. Dragaskis.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. At its regular meeting of February 12, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero with two commissioners absent to recommend approval of the zone amendment request submitted by Ryan Ellsworth of Paradise Acres LLC. Mr. Ellsworth wishes to amend condition number nine of ordinance number 2016-03 adopted on November 1, 2016. This condition states, quote, "Painted or stained solid masonry or concrete fencing shall be required around the perimeter of the project," end quote. The applicant wants to substitute vegetative screening in place of the required wall along North Fourth Avenue. As stated at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant is requesting that the existing zoning conditions be amended to remove the solid wall requirement on the east side of the subject property along North Fourth Avenue due to required drainage improvements on the subject property. These drainage improvements were determined to be necessary as part of the required drainage report for constructing the apartment buildings in conflict with the required wall. This drainage report was completed following approval of ordinance number 2016-03. All other zoning conditions are proposed to remain unchanged. Staff has scheduled the public hearing and possible adoption of ordinance number 2019-03 for February 19, 2019. The ordinance would become effective 30 days thereafter. And the proposed amendment would be to condition number nine only, which currently reads that painted or stained solid masonry or concrete fencing shall be required around the perimeter of the project, with the recommended addition from the commission to add with vegetative screening consisting of a minimum of five bushes and four trees per building substituting for the required wall on the east side of the subject property along North Fourth Avenue. With that, staff as well as the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. This time, I'm going to open this public hearing. If there's any members of the public that'd like to speak on this matter, may do so at this time. Seeing nobody move for the public hearing, I'll close the public hearing and go back to the item that we have here for discussion. So is there any questions or comments here of council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Justin, I got a question. Where's the retention pond at on this map that we're looking at?
On the overhead that you have in front of you also available, the detention basin is located between Buildings Two and Three and also is along Building Number Two between the building and Fourth Avenue. So it's kind of a backwards L that kind of wraps around that building, Number Two.
Okay, so if the retention plant, the retention thing is over there, what drainage issues are we having up on the east, the north side of this?
As part of the required improvements, they also installed a ditch on their property that runs along North Fourth Avenue for Buildings Number Three and Number Four and takes that drainage up to the detention basin. So that runs between the buildings and Fourth Avenue.
But there's nothing up there by Old Linden Road then, on the north side of that?
Currently not at this point. That'll be a future phase when you see the other buildings go in. The drainage plan that was presented and approved was for Buildings One through Four. They actually have to do an updated plan for the remaining buildings on the west side of the project, is my understanding.
Okay. I'm just trying to-
I think Vice Mayor was talking about closer towards Old Linden, to the north.
Correct. And that will be included as the additional drainage improvements as the additional buildings are completed.
So it's after the buildings are being built then?
In conjunction with, yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Crittenen.
Is there any concern about the trees and shrubs and primarily trees and power lines?
There are. Staff has discussed that with the applicant and the partner with the applicant. Obviously, when you've got overhead power lines that run through there, the height of the trees is a concern. They had originally proposed a type of a dwarf spruce, which would be acceptable from a maximum height standpoint. They grow to about 12 feet in height. However, they're extremely slow growing. They only grow about two to four inches a year. And so from a staff's perspective, we were concerned about the length of time that it would take for those trees to mature. In speaking with the partner there, the applicant, he's aware of that and has agreed to work with staff in determining what types of trees would be best suited for that location and would have a fairly moderate growth rate where we would see those mature in a fairly quickly amount of time rather than, you know, years and years down the road.
The Councilwoman Kukavas.
I just want to confirm that the masonry wall would still be required on the other three sides of the property, right?
Correct. So this is only for the wall along North Fourth Avenue. The applicant has already started the wall on the south side of the project. So down in this area adjacent to the building that is under construction, the wall along the west side, that remains unchanged. That is required still to go in. There's a small little portion up here on Old Linden Road that would be required in compliance with the condition of approval, condition nine for the perimeter of the project. From a staff's perspective, we could see that one be replaced with something similar to what we see here. However, again, that would be council's direction, not staff's direction to do that.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you again. Justin, what, since we voted on this back in February, what, how come it's been, I think he was okay with doing the wall way around his, or what's the major, major reason why we're changing, wanting to change the wall?
As stated at the Planning and Zoning meeting, the reason for this request is that the drainage study had not been completed at the time that the zoning was approved by the council. Once they did their drainage study that was required as part of the building, they recognized that there could be a potential conflict between the drainage improvements and the wall. That was the reason stated at the P&amp;Z meeting with, by the applicant.
Was something we just kind of overlooked when we-
I wouldn't say overlooked. It was more kind of a chain of events. You know, when you come for a zoning application, you don't necessarily know all the answers at that point. As they move forward with the project, they were faced with these conditions that came about, partly as they stated because of the requirement for the curb and the sidewalk there and then the requirements for the drainage, as they stated, that caused them to have to rethink this wall requirement, which is why they've come back before the council and commission.
I just have one more. I think the, one, I think one reason why the wall, maybe that, you know, at least I looked at was, you know, I used, it used to be open all the time anyway. It used to be just a barricade right there with red and white stripes where people can't drive through or anything else when it was the trailer park. And, you know, all the kids would cross through there and go there. I know we're putting sidewalks on both sides and everything else, hopefully to direct the kids to walk down the sidewalks instead of walking through a subdivision or apartment complex now, since it is now an apartment complex. I still like to see us have something there to defer the kids around because even if you go on the high school campus or the junior high, you'll see all the sidewalks and you'll see paths in the dirt because it's just like the geometry class we took, the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. So if they cut across there, they might go straight through there and, you know, I just don't want, I think the people deserve not to have a bunch of kids walking through with all their cars out there because there's no garages or anything else where they can put the cars in. So I just kind of want something to deter the kids or people to walk through that area. I'm not sure if it'll be a wall or a fence or a what.
I just, we have two, we have two streets here on the north, the south, and you probably have 30 feet. So you'd have a wall, a 30-foot opening, a wall, 30-foot opening, a wall. So to me, that's not conducive very much. Then you have the building, so they can't cut across through there. But at the same time, I'd like to see possibly a split rail fence out there to just define the project a little bit. I think it's attractive. I think you guys have done a nice job with building it and I think at one time, there was concern that possibly that was going to be a play area, more landscaping, more place to play and just smaller children being able to get out on the road. So maybe some walls would come from the building out or some fencing. Well, that's not happening. So just to put a wall along there would kind of be a detraction, I think, to the project and I don't know that it would serve a whole lot of purpose, but landscaping and possibly a split rail fence is something that I would like to see at least. It would maybe help deter some of the people just walking through and I think it would add some aesthetics to your project if the, if the owners would like to answer what they feel about that recommendation.
My name is Ryan Ellsworth. I'm one of the partners of the project. Thank you for having me today. To kind of clarify how this kind of came about and the time factor, I think you guys will remember, I was kind of pretty against the idea of putting curb and gutter and sidewalks. The drainage problem is what we had with that property. Finally, at the end, I said, okay, I'll put in curb and gutter and sidewalks if the city would do the engineering and get the drainage figured out. And that's the compromise we came to. And I will have to say that it worked out very well, working with the engineering department to come up with the system that I felt worked. My first plan was, if you guys remember what the project looked like originally, when the trailers was there, I wanted to put the wall in the very first scene just to hide how ugly that whole project was, you know, so put that down there and you could just drive straight off of Fourth right into the property. As the drainage report was getting more and more done and we saw where the curb and gutters want to go and you'll sit there and see the drainage on the other side of, that we have to do on the other side of the sidewalk as well, that's what's deterrent, part of it is, and with what you just spoke up as well, is when you have your setbacks on how your site is for coming on the Fourth Avenue and all that, it's just not feasible. It's just not going to look the same way, you know, we were looking at it before. I'm not really opposed to a split rail fence. Are you saying you'd rather have the split rail fence instead of the bushes and the trees?
Both.
Oh, you want both?
Mm-hmm.
Ah.
Oh, yeah.
Now you're in my pockets. I, 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 I'm not opposed to having some type of a barrier that goes along there, you know, if that's what, if that's what the city thinks would look a lot better there. I personally believe that what I was going to do there when it's all said and done, a year from now, people would say, oh, leave things up to Ryan, you can be pleased with what happens there. I would like to comment is that there's a few people who voted against this project originally and I'd like to thank that individual that came up to me and apologized because they didn't see our vision with what we were trying to do. And I accept that apology for that person who came up and told me that they didn't see what we're trying to do and they really admired how well it looked. I'd also like to thank the city staff who's worked with us so well on, on making this project be very, very functional. It's been a pleasure to have many workers who work for the city come up to us and tell us how excited they are to see this, this project come together and it cleaned up the whole neighborhood. And so for that, I want to thank and commend the city working so well with us on this project. And if we need to finalize it with the split rail fence, then let's do it. Any other questions?
Yeah. Maintenance on, on the landscaping. Are you, are you guys in charge of the maintenance there?
No problem.
And we can put that in here as well?
Yep.
Okay. That's kind of just my ideas. If anybody has any other suggestions or stuff, I'm open to that, too.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. I'll have the city clerk read this ordinance since all council members have a copy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, amending the zoning conditions of ordinance number 2016-3 on AP numbers 210431 through 210451.
Thank you. Look for a motion and in that motion, it feels to state to approve item number nine with the changes of a split rail fence as well as the landscaping and maintenance of it. Councilmember Crittenen.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2019-03 with a split rail fence and the maintenance performed by the owners of the property.
Yeah, with shrubs.
Split rail fence along Fourth Avenue?
Oh, pardon me, along Fourth Avenue, that is correct.
There were shrubs, too.
Hmm?
With trees and shrubs, too?
Yes. That's the ordinance that they already have, but yes, along with trees and shrubs.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? Off of the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? See that passed seven to zero. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here tonight, Ryan and Blay. Next item is item HC, consideration of an application submitted by Ryan Hall Hatzenbiler for temporary extension of premises, patio permit for Rumors Lounge, 1457 East Dusa Clubs. Mr. Kurosaki.
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan Hatzenbiler, on behalf of Rumors Lounge, which is located at 1457 East Dusa Clubs, submitted an application for a temporary extension of premises slash patio permit from June 13 through 17. The lounge currently holds a number six liquor license. Rumor wants to, Rumors wants to expand its premises to host a Sons of Odin Motorcycle Club rally by temporarily fencing an area on the bar's south side to accommodate this multi-day event. The area will be enclosed with six-foot-high chain-linked portable fencing and a swing gate will be added and monitored for emergency access only. Mr. Hatzenbiler proposes erecting the fencing and gate on Thursday, June 13, to prepare for the rally, which actually runs Friday through Sunday. The bar will be open on Thursday from 3:00 PM to closing, which is 2:00 AM, and on the three days, from 10:00 AM to closing. They do believe that on Sunday, that really they might start already tearing things down because they don't tend, the motorcycle group does not tend to stay into the evening. Four security personnel will patrol the premises during the stated times to ensure that no alcohol leaves or enters the premises. And they have reserved Monday, the next day, for, for teardown for any, any other items they need to do. We had the police department review the application. They performed a background check on the applicant, found nothing to preclude approving this request. Mr. Hatzenbiler was not able to attend tonight, so he has sent the manager of the Rumors Lounge, and her name is Sarah Sturdy. She's in the audience. Should you have any questions?
Thank you. Any council members have any comments or questions concerning this? I look for a motion. I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the state liquor board of the application submitted by Ryan Paul Hatzenbiler on behalf of Rumors Lounge for a temporary extension of his premises patio permit. With the added stipulation, the Cholo Police Department has the authority to cease operations should any problems occur. We have a motion. Second by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? All those in favor, all those in fa, aye? Any opposed? See that passed seven to zero. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. We should have made you talk, probably, huh? Next item is item 8D, consideration of an increase in construction costs for runway 0624 rehabilitation project of the Cholo Regional Airport. Mr. Burr.
Good evening. On June 5, 2018, city council authorized the mayor to sign the grant to fund the runway 0624 rehabilitation project in an amount not to exceed $2,036,955.35. Soon after construction began, contractor encountered unforeseen conditions. The underlying pavement was extensively delaminated, which means separated into layers, causing an uneven surface for after milling. Multiple days were spent to plan and to engineer the best solution for continuing the project. Initially, it appeared that milling another layer off would resolve the issue, but the same results occurred. To provide an even and leveling paving surface, it was determined a leveling course would be laid down prior to the final layer. The unforeseen- The unforeseen conditions required more planning, materials, and construction, resulting in an additional amount of $150,878.09 for the project. Federal Aviation Administration staff agreed to the additional amount and approved the new plans and construction. The city's share for this increase is $7,544. With this first increase, the cost to the city is $58,468 for the entire project. The original budgeted amount for the project was $93,125. The construction contractor, FNF Construction, also saw increased costs due to delays because of the delamination issue and requested additional compensation for their accrued costs. Staff is working on this additional increase of approximately $91,000 and will bring this back to the city council at a future date. The city's share for this increased cost would be approximately $4,550 and would still be within the budgeted amount. Staff recommends the council approve contract change order number one, in an amount not to exceed $150,878.09 for additional construction costs for the runway 624 rehabilitation, rehabilit, excuse me, rehabilitation project at the Cholo Regional Airport with the city's cost not to exceed $7,544.
I have a question. So the reason you're not just doing the change as well for the FNF of $91,000 is just because you don't have approval for that yet from FAA?
We don't have that completely worked out yet, and we haven't brought that amount to the FAA yet.
Any other questions? Comments? Look for a motion. You do know this will be our first change order we've approved in some time, right?
I know. We have, we have a hard time doing that.
Go ahead.
I moved to authorize the increase of the construction costs for runways 0624 rehabilitation project at the Cholo Regional Airport from $2,036,955.35 to $2,187,833.44.
There a second? Second by Councilmember Hatch. It is a good change order when you can get $150,000 worth of change for 450, 4500, I guess, is that, is that the trade off? But still, it's-
Just don't come back with another one. It's not going to go that easy next time.
There's a motion, second, Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, I think a lot of the people out there might be interested to know that the very large percentage, I believe in this particular case, 95%, is paid by the federal government to try to make sure we've got a safe runway out there.
That's correct.
And it's just one of those big, big projects without the big brother involvement, it'd be pretty much prohibitive to the city of Cholo to do this. I just thought people might like to know that's where the rest of the money is coming from.
We appreciate that, we really do. Thank you. Any other comments? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Thank you, see that pass seven to zero. This time we have summary of current events. Look to council members for any summary of current events they might have. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to thank all the employees that's been out there in the evening times and early mornings and all day moving snow around. I want to thank them for all the stuff they've been doing and how well they've been keeping the roads and and subdivisions all cleaned out, so big kudos out for those guys. Attended a meeting for the Meals and Wheels and Senior Center. They always need drivers, and if anybody's interested in being a driver for them, you can call 928-532-0656. They started all their fundraisers for this next year. They're going to have four different craft shows this year. One's going to be in May, July, September, and November, so we'll be coming out with the dates on that. We're looking at a music festival, big band. They don't have a date on that yet, but it's going to be here in Cholo. So they're looking for a lot of people to help and looking for some good donations and and people like to help with the Meals and Wheels and Senior Center. We do have people, we have some new clients, and we have people on waiting lists, so we're just waiting for all the updates to come in on that so we can update more people to get their food processed. Also attended a Cholo Main Street board meeting and discussed the 2019 Cholo Main Street projects. We have a couple of them that we're looking at. One is down here on Ninth and Old and the Deuce, and so we'll be bringing some information and some pictures to the council and to people to see what's going on with that. So that's what's going on with the Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member? Just want to stress the opportunity, again, citizens to be aware of the storm that's possibly coming this weekend. When you say a big storm, that means nothing, so we'll keep this. If it does happen, please remember to be patient and use caution and keep your cars parked off of the roadways and and give it a day or two to, or let the city clear the streets and make things safe to move again around. We appreciate their efforts on the storms that we've had, and it's a blessing to have the moisture that we're currently getting. Had an opportunity to attend the school summary of their meetings that they're having, what's going on with the school here, their building projects, and it's neat to see that in our community that almost all of the schools have raised by a letter grade. They've gone from a D to a C, from a B to an A, and from a C to a B, and we're real close of getting all of our schools back to that A standard that we would like to have them. That's a good report that our school is doing in our community. Had the opportunity this afternoon to meet with Senator McSally, with Mayor Owen from Pine Top Lakeside, as well as the mayor from Winslow. We had an opportunity to share some of the concerns that we have in this area where the federal administration can help in some of the projects that we have going on here. And so we look forward to continuing to to meet and build a relationship there as well with our other senators here we have in the state. I just like to take tonight here a moment and recognize our clerk, City Clerk Ann Kurosaki. Tonight is our last time that we're going to have Ann with us here in the capacity of city clerk. And so after many years of working here at the city dedication, this is a great, well, sad night, you know, to have Ann go. But we'd like to recognize Ann, our city clerk, who's retiring after 20 years of service to the city. She began with the city on October 27, 1997, as an assistant to the city clerk, became a deputy city clerk on April 17, 2000, and was named the city clerk on January 12, 2003. Ann has demonstrated outstanding leadership qualities and has earned the respect of clerks from around the state, her fellow employees, citizens, and council members. She's always represented the city with expertise and professionalism. Ann's last day with the city will be March 1, and will be, will miss her tremendously. We congratulate her and wish her many years of great retirement. And so Ann kick back, have a few days to yourself, okay? We appreciate it, but thank you very much. Yes. And I need- Manager?
I also like say Ann, thank you for your dedicated service. And as has been mentioned, we thank everyone for their patience as our crews have done, dealt with icy conditions and snowy weather. As has been mentioned, another large storm is expected to arrive with a large amount of snowfall this Thursday or Friday, yet to be seen. But we want to remind everybody that all city roadways must be clear of vehicles during active snow plowing operations. Any vehicle parked on a city street that has not moved off the street by the time the snow falls and and the plows begin operating may be cited and towed at the owner's expense. Snow plowing equipment operates 24 hours a day if needed, and parked vehicles make it almost impossible to plow the the roadways. We appreciate everyone's convenience or compliance to keep everyone safe during the snow plowing operations. In recreation opportunities, registration is open for upcoming spring play days, March 11 through 14, for boys and girls ages five through 12, and also, and pre-registration is required by March 1. Registrations are also being for spring one pitch co-ed softball slated to begin March 4th if the field's dry enough. And if you need more information on our recreation activities, you can call 532-4140. Because of the anticipated snowstorm on Thursday, the Forum for Parents and Adults hosted by the Cholo School District called Surviving the Active Lethal Threat Event, Whatever Parent Needs to Know, has been rescheduled from February 21st, this Thursday, to March 21st. As advertised, the forum will be held at the Cholo School District Auditorium from 6 to 8 p.m. It's an important training designed to heighten awareness and knowledge to, in how to prepare for and respond to lockdown situations at schools. No students or small children are allowed to, would will be allowed to attend. If you're interested in the event, you can register at eventbrite.com. Again, that event will, has been moved to March 21, 6 to 8 p.m. The city's accepting applications until 5 p.m. Friday, March 1, from citizens' interest in serving on our city committees. Vacancies are available on the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and the Aviation Advisory Committee. All the terms are four years, expiring in March 2023. Eligibility for membership includes being a Cholo resident, meaning you need to live within the incorporated boundaries of the city with the exception of the Aviation Advisory Committee. Applications are available at Cholo City Hall or online at choloz.org. If you want more information, the number to call is 532-4061. And that's all I have at this point, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other, my council? Scheduling of meetings, I don't know if any meetings that need to be scheduled?
We need, we do have one that we need to talk about regarding the vacancies to the commission, these committees. As usual, the council needs to schedule a special meeting to interview the candidates. In the past, the council's interviewed both the incumbents as well as the new applicants. And right now, we don't know how many new applicants we're going to have nor how many incumbents we have. We'll let you know once we reach that March 1 deadline. But we would like to look at some possible dates for the appointments. We had anticipated making, having the council make appointments on March 19 because they they're effective April 1. So we're wondering the council's availability for March 5 or March 12. We're already aware Councilman Leach may be gone. I don't know if you're March 5, but you're gone March 12 for sure.
I have no idea. Vice Mayor and myself were gone on the 12.
So we don't know how many there will be, but we we could, we'll be in touch with the council if March 5 would work for some of them. You don't have to interview the incumbents. In the past, you've interviewed them and you haven't interviewed them, so it works either way.
Will you send something out to us because most of us, or at least I have to look at a calendar and see, and I don't have it with me, so.
Right, March 5 is your next regular council meeting.
Okay.
And if that works and we just have a few, we could, we coordinate it starting earlier, 5:30 or so before your council meeting. Right now, we just don't know how many, so we just want to know if, make that date available for you.
Intendably that we're, March 5.
Okay, we'll, we'll see what we have, we'll let you know.
All right, any other items? I see no other agenda items or, well, well, it's this meeting.
Oh, and good job, Boy Scouts. You did great. Way to go.
Thank you very much.
Huh?
Their mayor badge.